Nine o'clock Tuesday morning. There she is, but you've got her captured or something. Anyway, Pastor Tim Lawrence, you want to do the invitation?
Our Father, we thank you for this day that you have made. It's a new day, a new opportunity. We know there's been a lot of division in our land. We pray, Lord, for your unity, spirit of unity, for your peace, for understanding with one another, and we ask your guidance. We just pray, Lord, that you will give commissioners and those citizens who share their opinions as well, Lord, the wisdom and the grace, the peace, the mercy, the love, the joy, the long-suffering, the gentleness, meekness, kindness. Lord, we speak these attributes into place today in the name of our Lord Jesus.
...in the name of our Lord Jesus.
Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance is applied to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, Our pledge of allegiance is applied to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this time was set aside for public comment. So this time was set aside for public comment. We have tried this, to have meetings orderly for six months. We have tried this, to have meetings orderly for six months. That has not come off yet. That has not come off yet. And so we will no longer have this time for public comment. And so we will no longer have this time for public comment. Our business meeting will no longer entertain public comment. Our business meeting will no longer entertain public comment. And it is 9:02. And it is 9:02. We adjourn, recess this meeting until 9:00. We adjourn, recess this meeting until 9:00.
I'd like to appeal the decision of the chair. I'd like to appeal the decision of the chair.
Okay, appeal, or recess, thank you. Okay, appeal, or recess, thank you.
Censorship, I believe this would be the greatest act of censorship there is. Censorship, I believe this would be the greatest act of censorship there is. Luke, would you like to weigh in on that? Luke, would you like to weigh in on that?
And so there is an item to discuss that question. And so there is an item to discuss that question. We don't get rid of public comment like that. We don't get rid of public comment like that. So let's go, and if I don't know the answer, we'll just have to field it. So let's go, and if I don't know the answer, we'll just have to field it. But I do expect it to continue to be streamed. But I do expect it to continue to be streamed.
Okay, so there was no vote. Okay, so there was no vote. There was no vote, and it's a violation of county ordinance. There was no vote, and it's a violation of county ordinance.
Violation of county ordinance, and I don't think you can stop public comment without a vote first. Violation of county ordinance, and I don't think you can stop public comment without a vote first. And even if you did make a vote, it would be a violation of the county ordinance. And even if you did make a vote, it would be a violation of the county ordinance. So since there was no vote, the fact that the chairman took the opportunity for the public to speak away is a... So since there was no vote, the fact that the chairman took the opportunity for the public to speak away is a...
Okay, it's 10 o'clock. It is for Tuesday Women's Business Meeting. And I will step down from the chair and make a motion to remove District Two, District Three Commissioner's report from the agenda. As these are not business items, these are public information items. And perhaps within the range of time specifically for that.
I don't find it appropriate for you to remove my item. This is an opportunity for me to report back on the business of the family that I am conducting. I think it's a representation that is necessary for the people.
I think it is too. I just don't believe it belongs on the business items. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I am not prepared to second that motion.
Okay, motion dies. Adopt the order of adenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move-
I'm sorry, but you guys are out of time.
We're at the adopt the order of-
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of adenda as presented.
I second the motion.
We'll call vote.
Mr. Omar.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Ratajk.
Yes. District Two Commissioner's report.
All right, so one of the things I'm going to report out on is working on some issues with recording in Clark Court. I did reach out this morning, actually. I touched base with the clerk's office and Mike Rosell specifically regarding some concerns of how things are recorded there. So we'll eventually hold a discussion with the community and our recording office. They are very limited. And when a person comes with an item to record, it has to look valid on the face of it. And then they are obligated by statute to actually record the items. Sometimes it can cause confusion if there's too many cross-outs and reviews. And that's part of what one of these communities is dealing with. So hopefully, we can understand what they have recorded legally and move forward as a community. The other report back is I agree to do a workshop on MLVs. I've done a little bit of feelers to see what a good timeframe would be for the community. And we're looking at end of August, September for an MLB discussion. We want to make sure that it allows for people that want to travel over the summertime and give good input from a community perspective. I intend to invite people that are not just within Bonner County business, but outside. People that deal with comp plans, deal with what it is that we're experiencing. To include developers and planners within our community because we need to really understand the process before we decide that maybe as a people we want to consider making a change to that. So stay tuned for that. I'll start releasing some of the names of the players that are going to be willing to sit down at the table and have that discussion for the community. The, one of the issues that has come up within, it's in Cootney County. They have a concern of it coming to Bonner County. And they want to draw some attention to the idea of smart cities and what that means to the public. There is a town hall that is going to be on the 28th at Alter Church at 6:30. And so they've actually reached out to Bonner County to see if members of Bonner County wanted to participate with understanding what is going on with respect to smart technology. One of the presentations given on that show how some of the items that we may be receiving for free are coming with that technology. To make sure that that's what we want in our community. If we are receiving things such as an upgraded traffic light can come with a camera type of a situation. So there are areas within Cootney County where they do have that already. And so there's a particular group that is trying to draw attention to that so that we give meaningful input as a community. There's another group called Freedom Exchange in Aff Hall is where they meet. They do meet every second and fourth Saturday of the month. And it's an opportunity for community members to try out the bartering system. And a lot of people have voiced, you know, there's a high price of inflation right now. We're struggling. One of the options is a barter system. I know in our area, we don't grow as much as some other people do. And there are a lot of people that are benefiting from the idea of doing a bartering system. And so I want to make sure we know that as a resource for our community. We're going into VOE's next week. That's going to take the fall of July. So I'm not going to commit to a community until August. And that community will actually be pre-scriber. I want to draw attention to and thank people for patience for West Bonner County School District is going through a lot right now. There's a lot of emotions involved. There's a lot of concerns regarding the school board, concerns regarding teachers, concerns regarding staff. But we need to remember that it's the kids that were there to assist. And we need to make sure we keep that group of people affected and impacted in our prayers so that we conduct ourselves in those meetings as such a way as an example for the kids that we're trying to fight to represent even if we're on a losing side. It's been a very significant issue in that district. We need qualified people to help in our area. It is a lower income area and it's hard to attract people to want to be involved in that. So we just want to ask for patience. They are wanting to participate in the things the county has to offer. One of my concerns was West Bonner County School District doesn't participate in our emergency planning that we do here at the county. But ponder it does. And we need to have them participate in what we do have to offer so that that training is consistent throughout our county. And they are going to work on identifying someone to come in and represent that school district at those meetings. And working with Bob Howard on making sure we get that emergency training that's available to that school district as well. While also recognizing that needing a superintendent and concerns regarding whether it's four-day school week or the new superintendent that's being recommended. There's a lot that's limiting their availability, even if it's just through the stress of the day. They're doing a lot of meetings. So good thoughts and good decorum will be beneficial. So that's all I have to report out today. I don't have a report on behavioral health. I did not attend the last meeting. But we still struggle with behavioral health providers in Bonner County. And that's also why we want to pay attention. We have an increase in issues with behavioral health with no providers readily available to be on a regular maintenance schedule type of a treatment. Thank you for those of you who stayed. The one thing that we came to a meeting of the minds is, in order to ensure that the public's voice is heard, that I will hold a discussion at 8:00 a.m. in the morning to invite the public to still come to this building and to ask questions. And I'll incorporate that information in my district to report and get answers. That way, I want to keep the conduit of communication going in a positive direction. And it's necessary and vital. And it's in keeping with the ordinance that we have and the expectation that we include the public and local government. So I appreciate the patience and the fact that you guys stayed even in the face of having law enforcement called to evacuate the room. I will address, it is reasonable for employees of the county to feel caught between a rock and a hard place when they are told to leave by the chair. So I don't want people to look to technology to be frustrated that they left. I will address the issue of how do I get services from technology after with Lewis Marshall. It shouldn't be that employees are stuck the way they were stuck having to choose what to do. And in order to get out of the situation as a whole, I will see if I can find somebody that will run the 8:00 a.m. meeting for him to stream. And I will post an update on that later today on Facebook and reach out to some people that I know have a big internet to cast to let them know what the decision is. But I'm confident that I can find someone that will be willing to participate on that issue. And just please don't, don't take it out on technology. It's a, it's a tough spot to be in. And I'm sure you guys noticed that I'm not swinging the majority vote on this floor. And so personal preservation sometimes is necessary. Thank you, and we'll-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report today.
Okay, consent agenda.
I have some questions on the executive session. Discussion decision regarding the public defender conflict attorney, what is that?
That would probably be put on there by them, I guess.
I can't hear you.
He said it would probably be put on by them. So I'll leave it at that. Okay.
It was a question, Mr. Chairman.
I understand. I should have asked the question earlier. I just noticed it.
Well, no, actually, I was just going to say, I was just going to ask the chairman for our response. I believe that's in, we had a meeting last week, but we did not take action. And I believe that Mr. Gagelberg went through the process so that he could present again so that we could actually vote on what he presented last week in executive session.
Oh, and what's the personnel issue?
That's not-
Executive session personnel is a generic term. And moving forward, moving forward, I will continue to protest the idea that we don't say what it is. And in order to avoid an issue where something happens in executive session that doesn't along, it will become public because we, I don't get enough information. I cannot vote for an executive session without knowing the reasons for an executive session. So just so long as you know, that's my disclaimer.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, purchases over $5,000 were $6,022.80.
We have to vote, please.
For technology.
We don't have a second either.
Well, he started speaking, and I didn't want to talk over him.
Oh, sorry.
So I second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Omar.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Dratchell.
Yes. Mike Rosedale.
I think you still have a consent agenda.
That, that was-
I'm pretending to be talking.
Mr. Chairman, for you, I have claim batch number 19. I think it says $1,104.5 and demand batch. I'll just sing. How about that?
Okay, I'll-
This will magnify this as well. All right, I'll just talk louder. Very good.
Good idea.
Okay, claims batch number 19, $873,145.82. And demand batch number 19 in the amount of $305,229.06, totaling $1,178,374.88.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment of the fiscal year '23 claims and demands in batch number 19 totaling $1,178,384.88.
I second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Wait, wait. Can I explain the demands? So in the demands, we have, the big ones are $212,000 for pharmacy, $61,000 for healthcare administration costs, and $10,000 for fuel.
Mr. Rose has a question.
Roll call vote.
The current ordinance-
I've already called for roll call vote. There's no more than special.
Well, actually, our ordinance says that we allow-
If you don't like the way I run the meeting, when you become chair, you can run it as you do.
So it's not-
If you don't like it, you can leave. I don't care. But we have called for a vote, and we will have the vote.
So we have, we have an ordinance in place that allows for public comment after our items. That was a decision-
That's a discretion of the chair. Thank you very much.
Miss, I'm not sure why you're doing this, but we have asked for that. So are you saying that you're going to deny my, so I'll change it to, I'm appealing your decision to deny the comment, which requires a vote.
Okay, well, that's fine. Appeal it, but I'm not going to have any part of it. It's at the discretion of the chair as to whether or not have public comment. I talked to legal this morning on that. And for today, that's how it will go. But I appreciate your concern.
So I am appealing the decision of the chair, which requires a vote.
I would second the motion for the purpose of the vote.
Roll call vote.
No.
Yes.
No.
Thank you.
I'm with clerk. So there was a motion and a second, I believe, Mr. Chairman, for demand batch.
Number 19.
Number 19.
Claims and batch number 19.
Totaling $1,178,384.88.
Yes, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you, commissioners. Next before you, I have EMS claims batch number 19 in the amount of $31,277.42 for your approval.
I move to approve payment of FY '23 EMS claims and demands in batch number 19, totaling $31,277.42.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Solid Waste, Bob.
Commissioner, Bob Howard, Director of Solid Waste for the record. Tax is a letter of understanding between Waste Management and Bonner County for the change of service at Schweitzer Solid Waste Collection Site. Waste Management will place a 30-yard lidded roll-off container to replace the six eight-yard containers that are in current use. The reason for this change is for bear control. Bonner County Solid Waste, Waste Management, and Idaho Fish and Game have determined that this will be the best solution to help keep bears out of a collection site. There is no financial adjustment to this operational change.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve that the county approved the letter of understanding between Bonner County and Waste Management for the container changes at the Schweitzer Collection Site.
I second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Omar.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Dratchell.
Yes, we-
Item number two. On April 25th, 2023, the Bonner County Commissioners awarded SNL Underground Incorporated the contract for Coburn Improvements Project. Project was $6,285,393. The attached change order in the amount of $22,080 is for a removal of organic material in Schedule E of the contract. The additional cost will bring the total contract price to $6,307,473.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve that the county approved SNL Underground's change order number one in the amount of $22,080 for the removal of organic material in Schedule E of the project. I further authorize the chairman to sign the change order.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Omar.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Dratchell.
Yes, thank you. Planning, Jake.
Good morning, Jake Gabel, Planning Director. So before you, there's a small change to Title 11, our building regulations. So the proposed change was drafted in conjunction with the Panhandle Health District. The code provision will result in a change to the process for the final inspection of the building location permit. The change will ensure that Panhandle Health is only responsible for those building location permits that are within their jurisdiction and that Panhandle Health, and that a Panhandle Health approval will only be required for building location permits that are connecting, that are not connecting to an existing sewer district. So we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with Panhandle Health in which they were reluctant to sign off on building location permits that were connecting to, inside of a sewer district. So they're essentially giving their final sign off on them. And they don't have any jurisdiction for subsurface sewer for those, those structures. So this change was crafted just to eliminate the need for them to sign off on those building location permits. And I believe this, this has been reviewed by legal. And as a reminder, Title 11, these building regulations are, don't fall within the Local Land use Planning Act or LUPA, so it doesn't require a hearing or to go through any recommendation from the planning commission. So those are just LUPA-based decisions, and this is a Title 11 building regulation change.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve an ordinance of Bonner County, Idaho, the number to be assigned, which is 695, providing for the amendment of Bonner County Revised Code Title 11 as presented. These changes will become effective upon publication.
I second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Omar.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Dratchell.
Yes. Road and Bridge, Matt.
Good morning. Matt Mulder, Staff Engineer for the record. So the Road and Bridge Department continues to work on our DuFert Road emergency culvert replacement. We've had Quigs Brothers contractors out there driving sheet pile copper dams for a week. Those sheet piles are proving rather uncooperative compared to what we were hoping for, but they have persevered, and they're nearing completion of putting in the copper dam. So once that is complete, we will be bringing in, with the approval of the agreement before us today, C.E. Kramer-Craman Contracting to de-water the copper dam work area and install the 12-foot diameter culvert, half of which has now been delivered and is on-site. And C.E. Kramer will backfill and compact around the culvert, build that up to the level that the copper dams can be removed. And then the Road and Bridge Department crews can take over to build up to the level of the road. So we're likely still two to three weeks out before the road can be reopened. It'd be my anticipation if all things go according to plan. So before you today is a contract with C.E. Kramer-Craman Contracting Incorporated for this revised scope of their portion of the work coming to $135,500, $135,500.00 for their portion of the work.
I move to award this emergency work to C.E. Kramer-Craman Contracting Inc. for $135,500, as shown on their attached scope and quote, and authorize the board to sign the contract.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Omar.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Dratchell.
Yes. The other half of the culvert is scheduled to arrive sometime this week.
I have not heard a firm, a firm date yet, but yeah. They told us two weeks from when we ordered it, so it should be sometime this week.
That's cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Lord.
Human Resources.
Good morning. Alicia Clark, HR Director for the record. Bonner County's requesting approval for a revision to the Compliance Policy 100. The revision is to ensure compliance with the new legislation at the federal level related to Pregnancy Discrimination Act and the Pump Act.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the revised Policy 100, compliance effective June 27th, 2023.
Motion.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Omar.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Dratchell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Decision discussion regarding public comment. Because the public comment has become quite a circus and a mockery for the county. And I find it ironic that the guy who actually suggested giving the hour comment to the public is actually the worst abuser of the bunch. And so because of that abuse, none of that anybody in the county building signed on for. And until I can be convinced that people will behave and act like adults, we will no longer have public comment in our business meetings. So I would make a motion to stop it until an undetermined time. And that's it. No public comment, Dan, I'm sorry.
I'm going to have a discussion on that, so-
We're not going to have a discussion with the public on it, but you can go ahead and discuss.
Actually, so that you're clear, a commissioner can seek input from anybody of the public. I can ask people for information. That is in the rules. And so inasmuch as you are the chair, you hold no greater power than any other commissioner on this board. We are a board.
In this room, I do.
Actually, you don't. And that is a significant misunderstanding on your part. Just because you vote with the majority on this board doesn't mean you have more power. And so it is not appropriate for you to determine. That is up to you whether or not I, as a duly elected official, can speak. And so I will exercise my right to do so.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. I believe that you were in the midst of putting a motion on the floor.
I put a motion on the floor.
Just so I can have it repeated, what was that motion, Mr. Chairman?
To stop public comment in our Tuesday business meeting until a later date.
I will second the motion.
What has happened in our public comments is comments have come up that are uncomfortable for some people on the board. That is actually an example of what it means to be in public service and to engage the public. We are actually required by rule to encourage meaningful input from the public in local government.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. There it is. I understand that, Mr. Williams, but there is a motion and a second on the floor.
And I am speaking, just like you interrupted me. I stopped, even though I don't feel I should have to stop. So I'm going to finish speaking. Doesn't matter even if you call the vote. I'm going to get this out. And so sit back, relax, and join the ride. It is important for us to not allow the door to be closed on the public. And if you guys don't take action on this, it's, it's to the detriment of the public. So public comments have been, have increased. We've had filled rooms. I could understand if we were removing it because we were sitting here for an hour with nobody participating, but actually, we have increased participation. It is because of public comment that we restored Zoom. Because people came, they gave their opinions, and we revisited over and over again. And due to the increase in public comment, we were able to restore Zoom. To deny the public that is not representing, it, what it really is is you're shutting the door on the voice that you don't want to hear. And that is not how government is supposed to work. I endure a lot on this board, but it was something I signed up for as a representative of Bonner County and this community. These people, some of these people should be at work right now, but they're here watching how government works. What I do today and every day impacts them significantly. This is a fantastic opportunity because we're all three already here. We're all three available to the public if they are physically. To not allow them to participate is a disservice. It's not constitutional. You're not in charge. You run the meeting. And if you don't like the way the meeting is run, then step down as the chair and give someone else the chair. You don't take it away from the public because you don't like what you hear, because people are holding us accountable. They are our supervisors. And any decision on this board that votes two to one to ignore not just public comment, but we're going to ignore the ordinance. I'll remind you how many times have commissioners held up a rule and said per statute, or ordinance, or guideline, except when it's what they don't want to hear. That is inconsistent. So if there is a desire to not have public comment in the fashion that you did today, which is abhorrent that you called the police on the public, you should actually have to work this through with legal because we have to change the ordinance. You don't get to say so because you're chair. All you do is do the meeting. Actually, it's not an opinion. It's not an opinion. And actually, and it's not good for the community. You walked into the community on fire. Nobody knew what was going on. We're just sitting here. And, and you, and the way in which you present it is actually the reason you're getting rid of public comment because you don't have the ability to control how you behave in front of the public because the public sees who you are in the face of the public. And you're closing the door because the blinders are open and it doesn't feel good because the story doesn't read well. I endured you calling me a witch last week. I didn't say, oh, I don't want to hear that.
I believe I called you a witch.
I believe my witchcraft, and my witchcraft is manipulation.
I said witch, I said manipulation is a form of witchcraft. I didn't say anybody's name. And as usual, you twist it and turn it like you want to.
And I have endured both-
That's the reason all this crap has been happening. It's self-inflicted by you.
Mr. Chairman, you know what? Can we just-
We will recess this meeting right now for 10 minutes, and we will postpone the others.
You're going to take a break every time you're held accountable as an individual.
And we will go into executive session upstairs in 10 minutes.
Right in, Dan Rose, W-R-I-T-E-I-N-V-A-N, I always see it at gmail.com for petitions against the chairman.
You do whatever you want to, Dan. I really have no regard for you whatsoever. You are one of the reasons this got done.
You can call me a repro版 of Al- You can call me a Repro-Bank of Al...